Welcome and thank you for coming out in a rainy morning to join us. I'm Mark Fisher, the new Vice Chancellor for Administration. I've been here all of six months. And this is a forum that we used on my prior campus, and I hope that we will continue to do this on this campus. So, welcome and thank you for coming, and please encourage your colleagues, we do this in the fall, to come again, and hopefully we'll fill the room. That's the goal. You know, being at Berkeley is really great. It's my third UC campus. I was at UCLA, and then Santa Barbara, and now here. And I'm thrilled to be part of what is one of the great academic institutions in the world. So, as I said earlier, we had a lot of success with this forum in Santa Barbara. It's a great opportunity for people to come together, to share what's going on, in particular Administration, but also my colleagues across Administration beyond our division. And Paul Alavasatos is joining us this morning. And hopefully, in each of these meetings, we'll be able to have others on the campus that can provide information to all of you about what's going on here. And I find that, you know, on college campuses, it's oftentimes very hard to communicate what's happening on the campus. Email doesn't really work. You may or may not read the newspaper. And so, this is a way for us to share information with you and provide you updates on what's happening. Obviously, on university campuses, and in particular this one, there's always change, and there's, you know, we're in a state of some change now here. So, again, a great way for us to provide important information to you. So, we have a packed agenda. So, the idea this morning will be that we will, moving pretty quickly, if you have questions that go beyond the questions you already submitted, some of us will be here afterwards. Please feel free to come up and talk to us. There'll be a survey tool that'll come out, so you can add questions to that. And also, my personal email address is M-A-R-C-F-I-S-H-E-R@berkeley.edu. And I encourage any and all of you to email me, especially if I step on a landmine and you want to tell me about it. I'm very happy to accept the fact that I'm oftentimes wrong, and happy to try to correct anything I think is a mistake. As I said, I've been in the UC now 22 years. I'm in my 23rd year. It's a phenomenal place to work. I'm probably the poster child for what can happen in the UC in terms of career. I started out as a part-time contract employee in 1995. I'm a little older, and I've been able to move up in my career and had just amazing success. And I think that for anyone in the UC, particularly people newer in their careers here, this is a phenomenal place to work. It's worth your investment in time. It's worth our investment in time in you. And I encourage you to stick with it, because this is a really good place. I've been here since September 19th, and just about six months this week. One of the things I've seen about Berkeley, which is, and don't tell my colleagues at the other two campuses this, but this is a group of very brilliant people, and not just the faculty and the students, but the staff. I've seen some of the most challenging questions from staff on this campus that I've seen or heard in my career. And kudos to you, because it's really a great group of people, very thoughtful, and the tradition of Berkeley, asking lots of tough questions, you know, diving deep into issues. And I think that this is one of the great strengths of the campus, and I'm, you know, extremely happy to be part of that community. Vision from Berkeley, from my perspective, is, you know, one, to make sure that we properly take care of our staff in terms of engagement today, and anything else we can do to make your careers here successful and as good as they can be. Beyond that, I'm also very interested in the quality of everything that we do as a division, and always want our efforts to be commensurate with the quality of the institution. So, one of the goals for me is, you know, whether it be the grounds, or how we work in human resources, or purchasing, or CSS, across the division is a level of excellence that matches the excellence of this place. So, as we're moving forward, that will be my challenge, to make sure that we can do that, and providing the right tools and resources for our group to be able to do that. Again, if you see something, say something. If there's something that on the campus, and I know our police chief likes that line, I'm stealing it. But if you see something, say something. It goes beyond security and safety. It includes things like something on grounds, or buildings, or anywhere else. Again, just send me an email or a call. I don't get many phone calls. And we'll try to work on it to make it better. That's our goal, and again, excellence in everything. We're going to hear from campus leaders in our group today, and I'm supposed to move slides and didn't. So, this is our division, first of all. So, for those of you that don't know, that's the shape of the Vice Chancellor Administration Organization. This is our executive leadership team. You know, this position used to have athletics. It doesn't have that anymore. It had finance. Rosemary Ray has that. I'm very happy to have Rosemary in that role, and it has things like real estate. So, this is who we are and what we do. And so, again, if there's ever any question about that, in fact, if everyone in the executive team would stand up, just so you know who's on our executive leadership team. So, they're all down here in the front. Everyone, if you don't know them, they're good people to know. They do good things. And then the next thing is, this is our immediate office. And, you know, an organization like this can't work well without a good and strong immediate office. And in that office, we have Ann Jeffrey, who many of you know. Ann was up earlier. Gabriella Savello, Gabby, where are you, Gabby? Gabby's over here, stand up, please. Yeah. You'll know how to get to me is through Gabby. Sharisa Fox, where are you, Sharisa? Stand up. Sharisa is in our office. And by the way, the event this morning, Gabby and Sharisa had a lot to do with. Sharisa, in particular, the details, and I love details, she really chased them this morning. So, I want to make sure that there's no food when you leave. Everyone has to take something or eat something. Do not leave anything here for us. Okay. Jennifer Chizik, who deals with organizational consultant and special projects. Jennifer, stand up. Yeah. You all know Jennifer. And Bill Reickley, Communications in our office. And Bill's the person that helped put together the entire event and the slideshow, and couldn't have been done without him. So, thank you to that core team. This is our agenda. Our first guest is Paul Alavasatos, who I'm now going to try to do justice to. But first of all, I'm honored to be able to introduce Paul. He's our Executive Vice Chancellor and Provost. He's an internationally renowned chemist and alumnus of UC Berkeley, has been affiliated with Berkeley for more than 30 years, and he was named Executive Vice Chancellor and Provost this last summer. Paul's been recognized with a Wolf Prize in Chemistry, a Linus Poling Award, and the National Medal of Science for Chemistry, and is well-known for his pioneering research in the field of nano-crystals and quantum dots. I'm going to add something here that's on this piece of paper. My colleagues in Santa Barbara, when I said who I was going to work with here, I said, this is a person who should have a Nobel Prize. So, Paul's a really renowned scientist, and we're all very lucky to be able to work with him. He has an impressive administrative credentials, because he ran the lab up on the hill, which is no small feat. So, please join me in welcoming Paul to the podium, and thank you.
Good morning. I'm so thrilled to see you here. I'm actually very excited to see this turnout. To me, it's an indicator of how devoted and how engaged you are in this amazing place. Berkeley is, by any measure, one of the most powerful institutions that we have to make society better. It is an incredible place. It does so many important things, none of which are possible without you. So, you play a phenomenal role in every aspect of it, from helping us to bring the very best students to Berkeley, the most deserving ones, the ones who will have a chance for the first time to elevate themselves and their families. Every discovery that's made, and there's one practically every single day on this campus, you are a co-discoverer of in every way, whether it's gene editing, or the latest algorithms of data science that are allowing students to answer social justice questions. Your contributions are vital to each one of those. So, I want to thank you. Over the period of time that I've been back on the campus, first as Vice Chancellor of Research, and now as Provost, I've had the opportunity to meet and engage with so many of you. I recognize a lot of you now personally, and I'm just always amazed by the dedication. It's terrific. And we need to, of course, share with you what the issues are that the institution is facing, so that you can be our partner in thinking about how to guide and help this great university be successful in its amazing mission to help society be stronger. We are very fortunate to have an amazing chancellor, and I'm so glad to be able to serve with her. And she is helping us to really think very hard about where we are now, but also where we need to be. And so, this semester, and throughout this academic year, we've had a process going to really think about, where should Berkeley be 10 years from now? Where do we want, what are some of our aspirations? What are some ways in which we can do things better? And I'm going to talk with you a little bit about that, but at the same time, I want to just remind all of us that it's a bit of a schizophrenic moment, because on the one hand, we have a lot of struggles to try to make the really limited resources that we have work. The problem that we're set by society is so deep and so demanding, so comprehensive, to try to help knowledge, to benefit society, to help teach people and educate people who are deserving. That's such a comprehensive problem. It's always difficult for us to have the resource that we need. And I think you know very well the stresses that we're under in that space. I'll refer to them in a little bit. But at the same time, we need all of us to be thinking about where we want to be in 10 years. And the chancellor has set out some really important priorities for us. The first one is building community. We've been through some tough times as a campus, and it's by working together and by listening to each other, and trying to engage in the relentless questioning that Mark referred to a moment ago, but to do it in a collegial way that we can actually find our way forward. So, we have a lot of work to do to make sure that we build trust within this organization, trust of each other, and trust of our ability to actually execute what it is that we say we're going to do. The chancellor has said that we need to do more to ensure that students thrive. I think we all know the heartbreaking stories that we do hear of students who don't have the means to get the basic needs that they, of housing and food. We're right next door to the food pantry, just above it, I guess, you know, where students come who are hungry. So, we have so much work to do there. Our community today only partially represents the community of California, and that means that the talent that's possible to help this world to do better is not fully developed, and we're not taking advantage of everything that is around us, in fact. So, we have so much to do to enhance diversity and inclusion. We need to do more to support transformative research for the public good, and we also really need a sustainable financial model. So, those are all issues that the chancellor has adopted as her strategic focus areas, and she's created a strategic planning process that we're in the mid-stuff right now. That process has a steering committee. The steering committee is led by Dean Rich Lyons from the Haas School. Rich is going to be stepping down at the end of this year after a 10-year tenure at the Haas School of Business, where he has done so much positive and good work. But we've got a hold of him still for the rest of this semester to help us think about the strategic plan. And Lisa Alvarez Cohen, who is, of course, the Chair of the Academic Senate. There are four working groups that are working on different aspects of the strategic plan right now. The first working group is addressing issues like grand challenges. There's a very interesting and exciting set of debates going on about what are a small number of topics that Berkeley really wants to excel in, whether it's a topic that has been mentioned as inclusive intelligence, meaning how will we use artificial intelligence tools, but also learn about how people themselves learn, and how will we make sure that those tools are ones that actually help society to be more equitable and not more unequal. So, you know, that's an example of a grand challenge that's being discussed quite widely right now, but there are dozens, literally, of such topics, and there's a lot of discussion going on about which one should we finally settle on. Dean Henry Brady of the Goldman School of Public Policy, and the Academic Senate Vice Chair Barbara Spackman are the ones leading a large group looking at that. Fiona Doyle and Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs, Hinaro Padilla, are really struggling with the question of student experience. That's a topic I also feel very, very strongly about. We have a wonderful group of undergraduates. They would like to have the opportunity to learn, not just in the classroom by the conventional ways of a defined curriculum, but they also want problem-driven learning, where they have opportunities themselves to engage in problems that they choose, which Kathy Koslind has been calling discovery experiences. And we have so much to do there to try to make it possible for all of our students, while they're here, to have a chance to really express their own desires, the topics that they want to explore, to have that extra empowerment and agency, so that they can then, when they leave Berkeley, go out into the world with that extra energy that comes from the feeling that not only have they learned things which people knew before, but they've really been able to think about the problems for the future that they care about. So, we're really thinking hard about the undergraduate curriculum and discovery experiences. This year, there will be as many master's degree students on the campus as there are PhDs. That's the first time in the history of Berkeley that's happened. That's a big change. Why is it happening? It's happening because in society today, in order to get the kind of employment that many people need, they have to have specialized knowledge beyond what comes from the undergraduate degree. Undergraduate degree can help people learn how to learn things, but they still need some specific knowledge in order to be able to go out into the world and do certain kinds of jobs. And so, they're coming to us, and we're offering them that kind of instruction, those master's degrees. But, oh my gosh, they have a lot of new needs, and we haven't thought enough about how this new, large population on the campus, how are they going to integrate? If they're only here for a year or two years, how are they going to make the network, the human network that they need to make, and how will they contribute to everybody else on this campus in a good way? So, there's a lot for us to think about there. The PhD students are also under a period of great change. The PhD is really about learning to create new knowledge. It's a very hard thing to do. Last evening, I was at a wonderful mentorship event, where the graduate students who have identified mentorship as one of their most important questions were asking, how can you help mentor us better? Our needs to learn new knowledge are kind of lonely. Often, we are, we're placed in a situation where we're discouraged, because it's so hard to do, and we need better mentorship. And so, there's a huge discussion going on around, what can we do to structure better environments, so that there are stronger networks that support students during that period? How do they get more faculty help? How do they help each other, and so on? So, the student experience, when we say we want them to go to thriving, of course, there's the basic needs element, the housing, food, but even beyond that, how do we create the best academic environment for these amazing students who are here? And there's a lot of thinking going on that way. And 10 years from now, Berkeley should have tried to establish a half dozen better ways for helping people to learn than what we do today. And there has to be continuous thinking, the relentless questioning that is the characteristic of Berkeley, to make it ever better. There's also a tremendous need to think about our financial strategy. There is a group, Professor Jenna Johnson-Hanks from the Academic Senate, and Vice Provost Ben Hermelin are thinking about, leading a group that's thinking about our financial models. And all those groups together, and you'll get a sense of why we need better financial models if you don't already in a moment, but, boy, is it needed. But all these groups are working hard together right now. They're going to have drafts of their reports in mid-April, and from April through the end of May, we'll be making those all available, open, for everyone to see and comment upon. Then throughout the summer, I think we'll have a further period for refining those plans, and ultimately, in the fall, we're going to start a big discussion about how to implement them. What will it mean to try to take these ideas of where we want to be in 10 years, and really start to make them happen for this campus in the coming years? So, it's an exciting time. It's an exciting time to be thinking about, what is it going to mean to be at Berkeley 10 years from now? And I personally am thrilled to be a part of that. At the same time, we have to be responsible in making sure that the Berkeley of today functions, and that it's able to do its business the way it needs to, and to honor our commitments to society. And it's a difficult thing for us to do, because we're still digging our way out of a deep deficit. And I think you all know, or if you've been following things for a number of years now, and I know most of you have, there's been a long period in which our budget has been challenged by many things that happened all around the same time. Of course, we had a gigantic recession that ushered in a period of even further decline in state support. A multiple-year freeze in student tuition meant that the income coming into the university was limited. The university had not contributed to pensions for a very long period of time, and became necessary for us in order to be able to support all the amazing people who work here after they've completed their time here, to start to contribute again and to catch up. So, suddenly, we have another large new expense associated with that. We also had the re-benching process in which, you know, Mark mentioned the other campuses, Santa Barbara, UCLA, but also if we look at our good friends at Riverside, Merced, Santa Cruz, and so on, the level of those universities is coming up and up and up every day. It's so inspiring to see that happening, and they're making so many more students have the opportunity to come to Berkeley or to their campus, whichever one it is. They needed to have more resource for that, so some of it was reallocated away from a mature campus like ours to some of the ones that are growing, and that makes a lot of sense. So, we also had some missteps. I think you know, we really ended up growing our staff support overall when we centralized our support services through CSS, partly because the design and the implementation of that did not entirely take place in a way that created a community-based decision that was widely accepted. So, we kind of, we did some centralization, and at the same time, the units then staffed up again. So, overall, the campus has actually been staffed to a higher degree than it was previously. So, a whole bunch of factors came together that generated a large debt for us. We're committed to having our balanced budget by 2020, and I think in the last two years, the campus has really been executing in a way that you can have confidence that when the campus, when we're saying that we're going to hit a set of numbers, that we do it. We started with a deficit of 149 million. We committed last year to bringing it down to 110. In fact, it came down to around 80. This year, we have a commitment to come from 110 down to 57, and, you know, there's a huge amount of work going on to make that happen. For the following fiscal year, we've got to bring it down yet again, and that's going to be yet another challenge, which is a deep discussion that's going on right now. How are we going to manage to do that? For the current fiscal year, the one that we're in right now, where I mentioned we're going to bring our deficit down from 110 million to 57, half of that is going to come from new revenue. A lot of it is things like those master's students that didn't used to be here, who are helping to create new kinds of tuition revenues. But there are also many other ways in which new monies are coming into the campus, and surely, it's through growth that ultimately, we want to see these things handled. But we do actually have to be able to have a balanced budget, because it's the only way that we can then have the kind of trust of the community that we live in, that we're able to handle the challenges of the fiscal, handle the challenges of our mission within a certain budget number. And it's tough. This year, we have a big fiscal challenge once again, and yet, we have to do it in a period of increased uncertainty. There is increased uncertainty for multiple reasons. The state had committed to us a 4% increase, but in fact, only gave 3%. That's a $7 million number right there. We had received a lot of assurances that we would get a tuition increase. Yesterday, the Regents approved a non-resident student tuition increase, but not that for residents. Perhaps they wish to make up. The legislature wants to make that up. That would be great, because it would make a huge difference to our students and to everybody who works here. But absent that, we still have to prepare a budget that will work and that will keep us on track. We're absolutely determined, and I want to emphasize this, we're absolutely determined that we will land the number in 2020, 2021, that we've balanced our budget, so that from then on, we can say, okay, we're going to draw a line on this period that's been incredibly hard, and now we can start to think about what a growth agenda looks like. So, even in the face of uncertainties about what might happen with the state budget and the increased uncertainties around what could happen with federal funding, and I think you can infer pretty easily why those might exist. And furthermore, our estimates are that we'll have revenue generation meeting up, meeting some of our gap. We can't be certain that that's going to work, because we're pretty new at it. So, all of those things mean that we have to be conservative, and so, we are going to do that. And so, for the 1819 fiscal year, we have to take our deficit from the, you know, $57 million number that we're expecting to land for this fiscal year, down to 20 million. Then we'll just, then there'll be a $20 million gap left for the following year after that. And that's a really, really hard thing to do. There's just no way around it. There's no way to talk about it, other than to say, this is going to be a really difficult fiscal year for us. And we are going to have to try to really work hard together to find a way to achieve that goal, while maintaining the best we can, the balance on the mission that we need to do. We are still asking all the academic units and the other units that have the potential to, to be thinking hard about how we can create new revenues. New revenues while also still honoring our mission. For example, if we are going to bring on new students, it better be because we think that there's a real need for those students to learn the things that they, that we're going to teach them, and not just because we might be able to get them to pay a tuition. So, we're focusing hard on the net revenue growth, but we are still going to have, you know, a tough budget year. And I think most of you probably know that we've asked, we've passed out a budget target to all units of 3%. And on top of that, we have to meet the cost of living and staff merit increases, especially in all the non-academic areas. So, that's a really tough thing, because if you add together the 3% base cut plus the other component, it's a very significant percentage, and it's really hard. So, we've been meeting in the cabinet. I can tell you, you know, we're meeting constantly, and every, all of the vice chancellors with the chancellor and myself are trying to work through, how can we make the most effective use of the resource we have and protect as many people who are here as we possibly can? We're in an iterative process of trying to look through that and try to put up some initial ideas, understand what the impacts of those might be, and then try to see if there can be some trade-offs, or we can do better with them. We're in the midst of that budget process. It's still going to go on for a little while yet. In April and May, we have a whole series of budget meetings going through these things. And we're going to try to do our very, very best to land a budget that hits the target that we need to hit, but also does its best to protect the mission and also the wonderful people that are here. You know, I want to just come back to the initial topic, which is, we've got this kind of schizophrenic moment on the one hand. We have so much need and so much, it's so important for us to be planning for where the future is going to be. And the future looks like it's so important and has so much potential for us to do new things, yet at the same time, we're in this environment, the real environment that we live in today, which is where our budget is really tough. And as a last thought, if we are, and we will, stick to our target and land that budget for the 2020, 2021 academic year of being at zero, I think it will help us to enter a new period psychologically as a campus, and a period where we can really know that we have the discipline now to hold it together and not to spend beyond what our means are. That will allow us to build things up and to really start to have a very exciting following decade. But we have to get there first, and I know it's going to be hard. And I want to thank all of you for sticking with it and for your engagement in helping us to try to think it through. Well, thank you all, and I hope we all cooperate well together this year to land the budget and have a good outcome. Thanks.
Greatly appreciate it, and I think I've done something to the slides and gotten them the wrong place. Okay, so Peggy Houston's going to join us now from CSS and talk about the regional restructuring we're doing there. So, Peggy, please.
First, I just want to start off with a thank you to Mark for creating this venue today. I appreciate the opportunity to both share and hear what's going on, and then I also appreciate the opportunity just to see everybody. In the few minutes before we started, I got to see some friends from IST, my first apartment on campus, my fast friend that I made in the Leadership Development Program in my first few years. few years here on campus, some folks from the Grad Division, whom I really appreciate working with, so great opportunity to reconnect. So, I'm here today to talk with you about the regional restructuring in Campus Shared Services. And to give a bit of context, this is part of a larger initiative on the campus for research administration, and there is also work happening on process improvement from end to end, as well as other areas of focus. So, I'm just giving you one piece, which is the regional restructuring. All right, so first of all, what is it? This is a reorganization of the CSS organizational structure, and this isn't the first reorg that I've been in during my time here on campus. This is where we're focusing on the two primary areas in CSS. So, we have two lines of control, if you will. One has been focused on functional or subject matter. So, that could be, for example, payroll, or research administration, or procurement processing. And then the other is focused on the local business needs in the departments, or the delivery of our service to our clients, if you will. So, why are we doing this? CSS has relied heavily on the functional structure, building our strength within the subject matter expertise. But as far as the other, the other work stream where it crosses organizational boundaries or functional boundaries, that becomes more complex, and we've got room for improvement there. So, we believe that dividing the campus, the client base, into smaller groups is going to help us to focus on that second work stream and to focus on the delivery of services and improve the delivery of services. And then also, as Paul just talked about, it's meeting and working more with the leadership in those units on the needs and expectations of their service, and how can we better service them. So, breaking it up into smaller groups will help us there. And when will this happen? So, there are plans for five academic areas or regions, and then one region that would be all other that are not in the academic regions. The first one is URSO, that is up and running and has been up and running for many years and serves the College of Engineering, the College of Environmental Design, and the I School. The second area or region that we've started up is for Chemistry and MPS. Those are the two academic units that are in there right now, and that one is also up and running as of January. It is in process of transitioning operations into that region. So, the staff have transitioned, and we are transitioning processes over the last couple of months. The other service regions are in various stages of initiation and will come up over the month, following months this year. So, how do we start up a region? So, maybe I should say that this is how I would like to start up a region. This makes sense, it's logical, but that's never gotten in the way of us making decisions around here. So, this is what I would like to do, is to first get the groups together that are in the region, the units that are in the region, and that they identify an associate dean. In the Chemistry and MPS region that I just mentioned that's up and running, Professor Cohen, who's sitting up here in the front, is the associate dean there. He serves as an intermediary, so he's working with the leads on the unit size, side, to help them prioritize their needs and their expectations, and then also working with us on the CSS side to understand those needs and expectations, and how to get to a solution that works for all. The associate dean and I will also co-manage the regional director, who will be responsible for the operations and managing the staff in the region. We also want to establish a governance structure for each region, so this would enable communications back and forth between the admin side and the academic side, or the administrative, and the administrative group as well, and also establish decision responsibility, and then transitioning the staff and operations into the region. So, what services are included? So, I need to say here also, I'm going to run through what services are included in the service region and what are included in central CSS. That is of today. There's a couple of things that are going to impact this over the coming months. One is budget for next year. I'll talk in a minute about our budget is going to change in CSS for next year, and you can probably guess in what direction. And then also, I am in conversation with the, a group of CAOs that are in an advisory committee for CSS about how we might make recommendations, look at the services, and are they in the location where we think they should be? In other words, are they, should they be in the service region? Should they be centrally located, or should they be in the units? And we'll come up with some recommendations there. So, for the moment, what's in the service region is Research Administration, that's both pre and post, four areas of HR, including the HR Partners, Gen 2s, Payroll, Timekeeping, HCM Data Entry, and then the Business and Financial Services areas of procurement and travel and entertainment. And the services that are remaining centralized are the ones that you see up there, recruiting, records management, onboarding, et cetera. Where will staff be located? So, we are seeking space where regional staff can co-locate. The first priority is for the staff that are already on campus. Research administrators are all located on campus, and HR partners also spend a good time, bit of their time, on campus. So, if we could have them co-locate, that would be our first priority. Other staff in the service regions, they may still remain down at Forest Street where they are now, or they may move up to the campus. To put them on campus, the academic units in the region would have to identify the permanent space to move them into. And this is a priority for the Chemistry and MPS region, and they are looking for that space now to move people to. There are other supports, support services within CSS and also with our partners and other central administrative units to support the regions, and they include things like, we are developing a portal for the region. This was started up last year, and basically, it's a page that would enable faculty member or a staff member in a region to go to one place and find all of the different systems that they work with in that one location. UC Path is also going to have an impact on the service regions, both as a system that we'll use and then also as, impact our processes as well. In the areas of training and development, we rely on our partners and other central administrative offices like Central HR, the Academic Personnel Office, the Sponsored Projects Office, et cetera, for subject matter training. And then we also have programs for ongoing development of our staff, like the Research Administrator Professional Development Program. And in collaboration with Joe Magnus, we're launching an HR Professional Development Program. And then within CSS, our managers and supervisors meet every other month and have, since I started in CSS, and we've also, this year, launched a Leadership Development Program for that group. And then on the process side, I mentioned UC Path, and I also mentioned earlier the Research Administration end-to-end effort of looking at processes. So, budget. Our budget in CSS is an expense budget. We are given one budget for the, all of CSS, or $1 amount, and then I figure up, I figure out how to allocate that across the units within CSS. As we're dividing up CSS further into these regional units, it is critical that we have input from the leads of the units that will be served by the regions and how we do that allocation. In some, we're looking for some fair, equitable way to allocate across the group. So, that is, there is a project that has just started up to determine how we will do that allocation. And then also, CSS, we will have a budget reduction for next year. It is approximately 6.2%. And so, this will also have an impact on how we, how we allocate, or what we have to allocate, and how we do, setting, how we set up the regions. I wanted to touch quickly, and I know my time is up, just another minute. I want to touch quickly, though, on, there were several questions that came in, that people had submitted ahead of time about the regional service model, and I wanted to touch on two of these just quickly, and they're related. One was about staffing gaps. Are there staffing gaps that are being created by dividing up into the regions? And the other one was on the overall cost of the service regions. So, yes, there are going to be staffing gaps, because when we take the resources that we have in CSS, we do our budget reduction and we divide them up, we're not going to have enough staff for all of the regions. And so, we have, or I have already started working with chief administrative officers about how are we going to manage that? I am working to get information out to CAOs so that they know what staffing we do have for their region, and we will have conversations about how we are going to look at staffing more holistically. So, the staff that's in CSS and also the staff in the units, so that we make sure that the work gets done. And then cost, the cost will determine, will be determined by how we resolve, how we resolve these problems of the gaps in staffing then. And that's it. And now, I have the pleasure of introducing my colleague, Joe Magnus, from Central HR.
Really? Good morning! Thank you, thank you. Oh, it's probably because the mic wasn't on, that's why you weren't responding, right? So, before we go one, even one second further, and I've got a big clock down here, so I know exactly how many seconds I'm taking, I wanted to spend one of my eight minutes talking about something really, really important, and that's you. So, I know that it can be really kind of challenging, also rewarding, being a manager or supervisor here on campus in our unique and challenging climate right now. And I know that we have Staff Appreciation Week next week, and you're probably thinking about how you can appreciate your staff members and your team members. And I wanted to just stop for a second and tell you how much we appreciate you. I know that you pour a lot of time and effort and energy into developing your people, supporting your people, and I know they appreciate you, and I just wanted to say that we also appreciate you. So, thank you very, very much. I am here to talk a little bit about HR. We went through a process about a year ago now, listening across campus and trying to identify strengths that we have, that we want to build on, as well as some gaps that we might want to bridge going forward. We came up with a new vision statement for Central Human Resources, and that is to be campus's proactive people partner. We also came up with three strategic priorities, and you can see those behind me. Our first strategic priority really talks about how we're changing our approach and our tone within Central Human Resources. Several of you have probably heard me talk about switching from being more of a gatekeeper to a thought partner, and hopefully, you've seen a change in the tone and actually, the content of the emails that are coming out from Central Human Resources that goes in that direction. We're also trying to strengthen the collaboration, as well as the expertise of all of our HR professionals across the campus, and not just in Central Human Resources, but within CSS Human Resources, and then Human Resources in the various different units across campus. And Peggy did just mention, one of the ways we're doing that is through our HR Professional Development Program. And in fact, our first online module has actually just launched today, so that's available on B Courses. Our second priority is people, and this is really helping develop and provide ways for our people to engage. I could go on and on and on about this one all day. Thank you for the question about the new development program that's focused on staff of color. I'm not going to mention that again, but it is definitely a top priority for us. And we also have several other programs that are in development. One is a fellowship or an internship-type program for staff, so an opportunity to go do a little bit of a project in a different department on campus. We're also looking at team-based development workshops that, again, are really targeting, improving people mobility across campus. And then last, on this topic of people, I wanted to also mention that we are evolving our performance management program, and here, the idea is that we're going to place less emphasis on the end-of-year, you know, what's written on the performance evaluation form and the rating, and more emphasis on ongoing conversations that are two-way conversations between you and your staff members. And there's more to come on that. The third priority, and I would argue that this one is probably the most important, this is also aligned with Chancellor Krist's priority around building community, and that's culture. There's a couple of things we're doing in this space that I wanted to mention. One is, we're investing in staff orgs and communities of practice. We know that staff orgs and communities of practice offer really, really great opportunities for our people to plug in, to learn, to lead, and we're placing some financial resources, as well as some people resources, behind strengthening our staff orgs and our communities of practice. Another thing that we're doing is we're developing a conflict resolution center, pretty much does what the title suggests that it might do, which is hopefully, help alleviate some conflict between staff that we're seeing, especially through our ER and LR team, our Employee and Labor Relations Team. And then finally, we've launched a whole bunch of different ways to engage our staff. One that's coming up next week is Staff Appreciation Week for spring. I'm particularly excited about it. We have a rock star bioengineering professor, Amy Herr, she's going to be talking on Monday. Paul's nodding in the front here, got the right gal. And we're also, we have our first staff field day. I think it's going to be super fun, that's on Wednesday. And then Friday, of course, we have Charter Day, celebrating our 150-year birthday. So, lots of great stuff, obviously, more to come. Back to the top of this slide, I think we're still on the right slide. I want to spend the balance of my time, 4 minutes and 20 seconds, talking about UC Path. There we go, UC Path. So, this is part of our one HR efforts. It's a big deal for HR, it's a big deal for payroll, hopefully, it's going to make your lives better. What is it? Well, it's kind of like an iPhone. Do you remember before we had iPhones, or before we had our, you know, mobile phones that have everything on it? It was a lot of disparate apps and different machinery that we used. UC Path is kind of like the iPhone for systems, if you will. You're laughing in the front here, I know I'm stretching here, right? So, think payroll, think benefits, think human resources, academic personnel. Instead of all being disparate apps, it's all in the same app, which is, or different systems, it's now all in the same system. So, that's essentially what UC Path is. The good news on Path is that it's a UC-wide effort, and we're not the first to have gone live with UC Path, which is good, Mark's nodding. We're not the last to go live, too, as this suggests, so Merced and Riverside, they went live back in December of last year. We've got our friends at UCLA and Santa Barbara, and they are going live later on this year. And then we, and I know that we're going to nail this, because Pratima is sitting in the back of the room, please stand up and wave, she is our awesome project manager, she's assembled a terrific team, and this woman right here is going to make sure that we go live March of 2019. So, I think we're in pretty good shape there. So, what's going to be different with UC Path? Specifically for managers, a couple of things for you all to think about. One is that you're going to have much better access to the information, especially payroll information, about your people. So, that, I think, is going to be helpful. And then for you as individuals, again, this concept of the iPhone and the one-stop shopping, you're also going to have better access for your own personal data, so your benefits information, your payroll information. So, that's one change. At the more sort of UC-Y, or UC Berkeley level, there's going to be some changes in terms of process flows, and there's a sort of a different approach, if you will, to how we engage with this particular HR system. HR system. So, when we're doing things like adding people new positions, or changing allocation of funding to a position, or maybe updating someone's salary, the process by which we do that is going to change. There's going to be an initiator, there's going to be some approvers, there'll be workflow between. And then, ultimately speaking, what's going to happen is the information goes off to the UC Rivers, or the UC Path Center in Riverside. And that's where most of the benefits and payroll processing and sort of the completed transaction actually happens. The good news for us on the process side here at UC Berkeley is it offers us an opportunity to clean up a few things, to eliminate some double data entry that we're experiencing right now, and some back-and-forth that we experience right now. And then, at the UC-wide level, because we have one system for the entire system, I think that this is going to improve, you know, sort of consistency for people who have multi-location appointments, or if people want to move across different UCs, this is all going to be much better, because we'll be on one system. Last but not least, I did want to just quickly give you a little bit of a sneak preview and tell you how you can plug in going forward. So, we do have a website up, and there's some pieces of paper that are being passed around, I think everyone's got one now at this point. This is your March cheat sheet for UC Path. And so, in there, if you get any questions from your people, this is, these are the answers. We'll be having some town halls later in May, just to give you a sense, a little bit of a deeper dive into some of the process changes. And then, once we hit September timeframe, this is when training starts, and I really appreciate if you would both prioritize training yourselves, as well as giving your people time to train as well. I'm going to stop there, it says in big red letters, "Time is up." And I'm going to thank you for listening. I'm always available for feedback, questions, I will be here afterwards, so please come find me. And without further ado, I'm going to introduce Margo Bennett, our police chief.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor, for this opportunity, and everyone for showing up and listening today. I want to first show you this. This is our CSO program, our Community Service Officers, these are our students who are working at the Police Department, running our night safety program. We cherish them, they're great. If any of you have ever called Bear Walk, you know that somebody on a bicycle in a, it's supposed to be gold, but his yellow shirt with navy pants, is going to show up and make sure you get safely wherever it is you are going. It's a great partnership that we have with Parking and Transportation, they're running the Night Safety Shuttle at the same time. We had a low spot this fall where we only had about 25 CSOs working for us. We're having a difficult time recruiting, and so, we did two things. We partnered with Vice Chancellor Fisher, who comes from a campus with a very strong CSO program. We also increased the entry-level wage to $16 an hour, and all of a sudden, the floodgates opened up. And so, we have about 60 students working for us. What we've been able to do with that added personnel is reduce the wait times for the walks in the evening. We've also put a couple of them on bicycles, paired together, doing campus, central campus patrolling. So, if you see them riding around, please make a point to say hi. They really are extra eyes and ears for us, and their outreach is tremendously important to students, staff, and faculty. And also importantly, we are re-initiating the Hill Patrol, which is staffing from our students who get on our all-terrain vehicle and go up through the hillsides on the paths to check for illegal campers. That's a fire hazard that certainly, we had a bad last year in California, and we're very thankful that with the support of Vice Chancellor Fisher, we can put that program back into effect. So, moving on from the CSOs, that's my phone number and email address, feel free to use it in any way that you wish, you'll be surprised, some of the emails I get. But I do want to say that we had a very busy fall, all of you know that. And it was a trying time for all of us. I for one was happy to see 2017 end and get started in 2018, although it looks like it's going to be busy as well. In the fall, we had two major events. It was the visit of Ben Shapiro, and followed up 10 days later with the Free Speech Week that fell apart at the last minute, but nonetheless, still gave us challenges. And we knew that we had to make this a successful series of events. Reputationally, Berkeley took a hit with the February 1 Milo Yiannopoulos riot that occurred from our campus. And so, our mantra and our effort was to make sure this thing happened and make sure it happened safely. Now, what that caused was a change in the landscape that you saw around the campus, particularly impacting upper and lower spiral plazas, and the work that's done in those areas. It left some of our population feeling great, because we had a lot of police here to protect them, but it also left some of our population feeling uneasy, feeling frightened and angry at having that heavy police presence. I mean, we're very sensitive to the fact that we have a large international population who, you know, have a different concept of what police can do for you or to you. We also have students of color that come with not perhaps the best experiences from where they have grown up. And we have our undocumented students that are frankly in a very tough position in today's climate. So, we know that the work we had to do in the fall was difficult for a lot of folks. And following conversations with the ASUC, the Graduate Assembly, the Vice Chancellor to the Equity and Inclusion, the Free Speech Commission, the Vice Chancellor and I have talked, and we're going to be crafting and creating an advisory board to the Police Department. It's going to involve representation by faculty, staff, graduate and undergraduate students. And this is going to be an ongoing effort, open up conversation with the Police Department, open up discussion on what kind of policing our community needs, deserves, and how we can make that happen in a more collaborative effort. Certainly, February 1 of this year brought a tense time for us, there was union activity at Bancroft and Telegraph, we wound up making an arrest at that time, it was one of our employees. Arrests are never easy, they are never pretty, and they involve a lot of circumstances and things happening at the same time. We've hired, we, the Police Department, we've hired an individual by the name of Sid Heel and his associate named Richard Ordenthal to take a look at that event. We're giving them everything we have, video, police reports, statements, you know, names of people who were there. They're going to do a review of that event, create a report that I will turn over to the Vice Chancellor. And our goal in doing that is, number one, transparency in what transpired, but also, you know, identify some best practices. If we didn't hit the mark on that, I want to know it. And I want us to be able to learn from experiences, and when I say us, I mean all of us, learn from experiences and make for a more controlled and better situation in the future. I want to talk about Office of Emergency Management in the three minutes and 20 seconds I have left. There's a big change coming in that office. We've, we had a change in the financial structure, which brought about a change in the personnel. Also, our continuity planner, her husband got a job in England, and she decided she had to go with him. So, we have that vacancy, we're hopefully going to be posting that soon and fill that position, because continuity planning is critical in our recovery following any kind of disaster. Some of you may know that Amina Sefa, the manager of Office of Emergency Management, has taken a more system-wide role. She's going to be working with continuity planning system-wide and doing a lot closer work with the Office of the President. So, we will be looking for a new manager for our Office of Emergency Preparedness. Stephen Stoll is taking that on himself right now, he's got a great background in that, and so, soon, we'll have the Campus Committee meet. Our goal is to increase training on the ground, that means with you folks, so that when a major catastrophe occurs, you know what you need to do in order to help us take control of the situation quickly and recover in a faster manner. Lastly, I wanted to just talk about what happened in Parkland. Certainly, tensions have been high, and we've been getting questions about what's the police readiness in dealing with situations similar to what happened in Parkland. We have a very open campus, and when I mean open, I mean it's porous, you can get into us from any direction. So, controlling access into the campus is pretty difficult. We are working with some of our major event locations to harden those areas. You'll probably see some difference this coming fall in how you enter and exit from the football games and other large events. We're training, and we offer training to anyone, any department, any group that wants it on how to survive a targeted mass violence act. So, if your department's interested in it, please shoot me an email, oh, that's a bad word, please send me an email, and I will, sorry, and I will act on that quickly, and we'll get that training into you. And also, know that our officers are training year-round on response to those kinds of events that we hope never happen on our campus. So, with that said, I could talk to you about CLIRI compliance, you don't want to hear about that, but you will, because we'll be reissuing our ASR after about an eight-month audit on some of the records that we produce every year in compliance with the CLIRI Act. But next is my partner at the Leadership Team, that's Larry Conrad. He's our Associate Vice Chancellor for Information Technology and Chief Information Officer. So, Larry, it's your turn. And I've got three seconds to speak.
Good morning, and given our schedule, maybe I should go right to closing my remarks, I'm not sure. At any rate, thank you for the opportunity to chat a little bit about some of the things that we're focused on in IST and with the larger campus IT community. So, I, as I thought about this, this 10 minutes today, I thought, well, I want to focus really on three specific things. One is, the campus commitment and move to two-factor authentication, which we've labeled the CalNet Two-Step. And hopefully, that doesn't come as a surprise to any of you all. We made the decision and the commitment as a campus to move all faculty and all staff to this two-factor authentication by April 16. So, that was in a pretty quick timeframe. It's in two cohorts, we decided to take administrative units first and then academic units second. Today is the deadline for administrative units, so I won't put anybody on the spot and say, you know, who hasn't signed up, but I certainly hope you all have signed up, in all seriousness. This, you know, what we have found over and over again is that compromised CalNet credentials is the number-one way that our systems could compromise. So, we don't lightly do something like this, which is to make, you know, getting into our environments and our systems harder, more difficult, more convoluted. But this is something that's happening really all over the country, a good share of the major universities have already moved to this, just because, you know, this is, it's just not, in our current environment, it's not sufficiently hardened, to borrow the chief's comment. At any rate, so this is a necessary move. The good news is, we've spent a lot of time trying to make that signup process pretty straightforward and transparent. We hear that the vast majority of people, like 95% of the people, are able to do this on a self-service basis, but we're more than happy to help anybody who wants that help to get through that process. We think most people, well, certainly what we're seeing is, most people are actually using a cellphone as one, as a way, shape, or form, but there are other options available for people who either don't have a cellphone, don't want to use their cellphone, we're really, you know, the key is to get to that two-factor solution, one way or another, and there are a number of options. At any rate, as I said, we're going through two cohorts, starting tomorrow, people in administrative units who have not signed up, when you go to log on to CalNet, if you haven't signed up, that's the only option you will have. It will take you to the signup screen, and you won't be able to access any of the CalNet application until you complete that. So, again, if there are some of you who are procrastinators, like I will freely admit I tend to be, let me encourage you to take some time today and get on that. And again, you can call the service desk, I see Jerry Uriarty out there, his team is working closely with our CalNet team to support, provide whatever support people need. So, let's see, we started that notification process to administrative users on February 15 with the target of completing it by today. We'll start tomorrow with CalNet sign-ons for, sign-on screen notices to academic unit. We are targeting another month, and chief, I've just made the same problem, you know, the same, the same error you did, I didn't want to say target. We are focused on completing that by April 16 for the, for the second cohort. We've been making good progress, as of last Friday, we had 75% of the administrative group. As of yesterday about noon, we were up to 87%, so we've made some good progress, but we've still got to get that last, you know, get to that 100%. So, let's see. And, yeah, and again, if you need help, please, please reach out, we're poison-ready to provide whatever assistance is needed. So, the, as I say, it's a two-step process, login with your CalNet ID, and then you will be, if you use the smartphone option, you'll be given an option to use your smartphone to just confirm that you are who you say you are. Excuse me. Student Information System. So, Student Information System is a major effort by this campus over about the last three and a half years. We, the official project to implement a new Student Information System ran for three full years. We officially ended it last summer, at the end of the fiscal year. However, the work was not done, you know, once you start down the path of implementing a student system, you really kind of, you know, you really pretty much have to stay with the academic calendar, the price of missing one of those milestones could put you back a whole year if you're not careful. So, consequently, we ended up having to make some decisions to move some, implementing some functionality out beyond the end of the project, but because of the financial problems, which you're all aware of, and certainly our provost spent time on, you know, that, there was money left at the end of the project to complete the work, that money was swept. So, now, we're, we're working with the challenge of making good progress against the list of things that need to be done, and figuring out the options for how we can do that. So, one of the things that, you know, Mark has put forward, and we're trying to pursue that, is maybe we, maybe we could treat that as sort of a Phase 2 to complete the significant things that need to be done. So, that's, that's an idea that we're exploring right now. Angel Blackstone is leading that effort. So, reimagining IT, so the backdrop on this is, last summer, the campus, broader IT community completed this work on a new, and I like to say, bottom-up IT strategic plan for the campus. The idea for that came about a year earlier, where basically, we felt like there was an opportunity, as the campus was rebuilding the executive management team, that we could put together some ideas to put forward, to share, to just some, just, you know, kind of a menu, if you will, of things to discuss with our new leadership as they came up to speed. And we felt, we felt like, you know, that we were able to keep that on target, or there's that word again, keep on that word again, keep on schedule and have that. And we've been having a number of individual conversations with leaders around campus. But we also recognize that we were building something, you know, from the bottom up and that when our new leadership was onboard, they would have things that, that they, direction and things that they needed campus to accomplish. So we've been committed from the start to morph that plan as needed to support, you know, the things that we need to do. And that process is going to be, begin sort of formally next week. We're going to have a workshop with about 70 key IT leaders from around campus. We're going to, we're going to begin that work, but we know we can't finish it until we hear and see more formally the results of the campus strategic framework that our provost alluded to. And there's also, the chancellor had initiated an outside IT review by a consulting group, and, and we're waiting for those results as well. And again, it's our commitment as an IT community to take the, the results from the strategic framework and from the outside review and incorporate those into, into the plan. The goal at the end of the day is to make sure that the campus IT community is providing what the broader campus needs in order to move the campus forward. And David Greenbaum is, is leading the implementation effort on that. So that's very quickly on that. It's my, it's my pleasure to introduce Kira Stoll, who's the Director of Sustainability. Thank you.
So glad to be here and have an opportunity to talk to you for a few minutes about campus sustainability and also a thank you to many people that are out in the room today whose projects and hard work I get to highlight today around sustainability. So Berkeley Sustainability. I just wanted to start with a statement that I've been thinking about a lot, and that is that sustainability, environmental sustainability, is one of our physical planning and operational values, and it's one of our core values. And that doesn't mean that we've done everything that we can, or we've been successful, or we've gotten there, but that we've done a lot around the issues and sustainability here in our operations and our planning. And I want to share some of those highlights with you today and some, some thoughts on that. So, you know, we have land use planning documents and environmental documents that go back many years. They include sustainable development ideas in them already about how we're supposed to be building our campus and thinking about our landscapes and our water. We have, from our students, a lot of passion around it. There's almost 50 student environmental groups on the campus, many of them focused on pilot projects that are about improving what we're doing on campus, whether it's having more sustainable food, looking at campus gardens. We have sustainable engineers working. I mean, the spectrum is pretty amazing. I think they're really shifting us and pushing us with their projects to think more forwardly. We've had, on this campus for 15 years, Chancellor's Advisory Committee on Sustainability, a group of really committed people over time that have really looked at the issues, tried to discuss gaps and move us forward in what we're thinking around in terms of our operations. And the UC system has a policy on sustainable practices. It's been in place for 15 years and it's, covers about, it covers nine topic areas in sustainability. It sets goals, it sets priorities, and it sets procedures around what we want to be, what we want to be moving forward as an environmental institution. I just wanted to point out, you know, just talk a little bit about the policies that we have. Some of the big ones we have around environmental sustainability are in the areas of climate, energy, and buildings. We actually have a carbon neutrality goal for our building energy use in our fleet by 2025. It's quite an ambitious goal, but it's gotten people thinking really creatively about how we're going to be able to move forward with renewable energy and becoming more efficient. Beginning in 2019, our policy is going to ask that when we build or do large renovations, that we really think about how to do those buildings in a zero-net carbon fashion, where we're really thinking about how can that have no carbon impact? How can we not add to our carbon or greenhouse gas emissions with our growth? And we also have goals around what kind of energy we're going to use. It's going to be clean electricity in the future. We're really going to look at renewable energy, how we can replace that, and how can we become more efficient? And we've been successful over the last 25 years. We've kept our campus greenhouse gas emissions in a time over 25 years when we've been growing quite significantly at the same levels we were at in 1990. So it's that same kind of focus that we have to have moving forward. In our built environment, 12% of our, our square footage of our 16 million square feet right now has been either renovated or built with a whole set of environment and energy qualities to them, and we have nine more of those in the works now. And again, that zero-net carbon energy building idea is going to be another added layer to that. It's going to be a while before we get to the 16 million square feet, but we are going through it. Saving energy is big. So, you know, there's been, oftentimes you have to invest to make things more environmentally sustainable, but really sustainability is also about being really conscientious about what resources we're using. And in many cases, it means that we're saving. And so it can be big savings in some instances, and it can be small, you know, savings that aggregate into something. So in, since 2008, we've done hundreds of energy efficiency projects on here. There's many people in the room here today that have worked on those. We've saved, we're saving 15,000 tons of greenhouse gas emissions every year because of that and millions of dollars, and we're going to keep moving forward on it. And part of the process too is engaging everybody in the activities they can do around being a more sustainable campus. And so we have, 100 of our campus buildings have live, public-facing energy dashboards. You can see how your building is performing. And we've actually found problems, people in the buildings have found problems and alerted facility services to come. It's brought energy savings, it's brought money savings. And it really does make a difference, everything that each of us can do in terms of the small things that add up. So really think about turning off those lights if you're, you know, using a desk-side lamp, you know, LED bulbs, you know, there's a lot we could do altogether. So water, we use an enormous amount of water here. The rain is beautiful, but we really need to start thinking about being, dealing with dry conditions on an annual basis. We use almost a little bit over 600 million gallons of water a year. Half of that is domestic use, about 20%, a little less than 20% is in our labs, and then less than 10% on our landscape. So I think this is an area where we're making improvements as we can, as we're going in to renovate, but I think, you know, a real rethink on who we are and how we use water is something that, is, it's an interesting challenge for us. Again, everything that we can do, just a little stat here, if every one of us used one gallon less of water a day on campus, we could save, you know, 13 millions of gallons of water a year and over $100,000. And that's not too hard to do. That's maybe, you know, thinking about not running the water while you're washing your dishes or while you're washing your hands. We want you to wash your hands. Don't forget. And also report a leak. Facility services will respond if you see something going on. So call that number or email them. Transportation, one of my favorite subjects. So this is something we should all really be proud of. There's a lot of work that's gone on to, to make it so that we're a place where 83%, about 83% of us commute here to campus by something other than driving alone. That's pretty phenomenal when you compare it to the Bay Area or other urban centers. We're really committed here. 10% of our population commutes by bicycle, even with those hills and the rain. So, you know, we've done, we've invested in housing for our students and walking distance to the campus, and I think we're really looking at doing that in the future also. That makes a big difference in terms of, you know, how, how people can come. And we have a small business fleet for a campus of our size, but 35% of that fleet now is what we call green. It's fuel-efficient, it's hybrid, it's a low-speed vehicle, and we're getting, we're going to be looking at more electric vehicles and ways to do that. One stat, just to share, we do a lot of business air travel. When we think about our carbon impacts, we do look at what we, the impacts from our business travel. Absolutely essential for us as a university and a research university to be out there in the world. But on an annual basis, we travel over 112 million miles a year on an airplane. That's about 210 round trips to the moon, just for perspective. And so, you know, this is something that we're going to continue to do because it's part of our mission. But I just want to say, the technology, IT, just is, it's phenomenal what we can do today in terms of having a personal, personalized meeting online. It's so different than what we could have said three years ago. So, you know, if we reduced our air travel by just 10% by using a tool like Zoom or some other video conferencing, we would be reducing our annual greenhouse gas emissions by 2,000 tons, and we could probably save somewhere one and a half million dollars, you know, when you think about those kinds of trips that we take. And Berkeley Moves, our commute program, is fantastic. I couldn't even go through everything that they offer us in terms of things to consider for an alternative. I only have one minute, so I'm going to have to go really quickly here. We purchase a lot of products. We track some of them. It's challenging, but I really encourage you to think about buying environmentally preferred products. You can find them in the Bearby System. There's a roadshow on April 10th at 10:00 AM at Stanley Hall. Go check out the office, the office supplies and the lab supplies that we have that we've designated as environmentally preferred. And I want to acknowledge everyone here who made this a zero-waste event. It is everything that you see there, that you served yourself with as a compostable organic material. That's what we're trying for. We're trying to get to zero municipal solid waste by 2020. It is, we're at about 50% of that diversion right now, but we know that by rolling out, which we're planning on doing, bins to the interior and the exterior of all the state-funded buildings in the next three years, that you will have the infrastructure in your building to make this happen. The challenge is that we all have to, like, pitch in and put it in the right bin, and that's not always easy, but we've got great instructions. We've got student teams that will come out and talk to your departments about how to do that. You know, again, think about reducing, reusing, recycling, composting, you know, and help us get there. This is a really meaningful goal for a lot of people on campus, particularly students. My time is up, so thank you. Please engage. Feel free to get ahold of me, sustainability.berkley.edu or stoll@berkeley.edu, and thank you. And now I would like to call Mark back up, Mark Fisher, to close us up.
Thanks, Kira. Thanks, everybody. I just want to add a point to something that Kira just went through. So you think, oh, how important is sustainability? Well, let me tell you that between what Kira's doing and facilities is doing, if we reduce energy use, we reduce energy spend. If we reduce energy spend, we save jobs. So it's really important that all of you think this way all of the time because it's a way to keep our employee base strong. For an example, if we make our own electricity, which we do for about 80% of it, it's about eight cents a kilowatt hour, I think, and Sally's in here and somewhere, she'll correct me. But if we buy electricity from PG&E, it's about 20 cents a kilowatt hour. So you can look at that delta. If we can reduce our energy use by 20% on this campus, it's a big chunk of money we can save and it turns into people. So please do listen to what Kira's saying and help us do this. One last pitch on this for me personally. I have a real pet peeve about trash on the campus. If you see something on the ground that's not too gross, pick it up and put it in the trash for us because when people come to campus, we want to give them the best impression possible. And if every single one of us does this, and my staff knows that it's one of my pet issues and I do this myself, please help me help the campus look better. Okay, so thanks, everybody. It's a great team that I've walked into. I'm really appreciative of all the work that they've done today. If you haven't signed up for the CalNet Two-Step, there's a group here that can help you in the back of the room, standing up. Please do see them and they can help you do it. It's 150th anniversary of Berkeley. We all know that. If you go to, is there a slide that says this or not? No. So if you go to the 150.berkley.edu site, you'll get information on the events around this. Please do participate. The UC is broadly is saying it's 150 years old. Well, we're really the ones that are 150 years old, so let's take credit for being there, right? It's a phenomenal thing to be involved in. There's a personal financial fair coming up, and Joe can probably give you more details on that. And then you're going to get a forum on feedback. Please do provide us feedback. We're going to do this again in October. I hope to fill the room then. I'm really happy to see a crowd as big as we have on a rainy day like today. Do not leave those cookies in the back of the room. Take them in your pocket to your colleagues and tell them next time they should come because we'll have goodies. And because I'm a Southerner, there'll always be iced tea. Take some of that. That's what the weird thing in the pitcher is, it looks brown. And there'll always be food because that's what a Southern host does. So that's my culture, my background, and whatever. And so thank you all for coming. We'll see you in the fall.